Good afternoon, everyone. With the posted time having arrived and a quorum of members present, I'll call the Capital Improvements and Street Maintenance Committee for the City of Wausau to order today is Thursday, April 8th, 2021. On the first order of business on our agenda is the consent agenda. That includes the approval of the minutes from our March 11th, 2021 meeting, action on a stormwater maintenance agreement for Iwok LLC at 1204 West Bridge Street, action on a preliminary resolution to vacate and discontinue the alley lying west of 827 Turner Street between North 8th Street, North 9th Street, and Augusta Avenue. Any of those items, does anyone want any of those pulled from consent? Or are we good to go with those on consent? Oh, go ahead, Deb. Item B? Okay. So we'll consider the stormwater maintenance agreement for Iwok LLC separately after the consent agenda. With the other two items remaining, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Neil, is there a second? Second by Larson. And we'll go ahead and we'll do a roll call votes tonight because we have one member with us on WebEx. Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well, and those two items are approved. Then we'll continue with the action on stormwater maintenance agreement for Iwok LLC at 1204 West Bridge Street. A larger map was passed out before the meeting. You should have that on your desks. This is that site that a number of years ago, QuickTrip had proposed to build on, and then it sat for quite a while. And now it appears a professional building is wanting to build on that site. I believe it was owned by, I think it was owned by St. Anne's Church, and they've been trying to sell it for a period of time. So we have a new proposal here. This is really just a stormwater facility, which shows a pond at the northeast corner of the lot, but it does show the positioning of the building. It looks like TJ's got that item, if you want to walk us through it.
Sure. So this site has gone through review by myself here at the city and then also DNR to meet all the standards within the municipal code and through DNR. So the majority of the site's runoff does run to that infiltration pond that you see in the northeast corner. Per our city standards, the runoff is to meet the two-year, 10-year, and 25-year, and also the 100-year runoff storms. And that's the frequency in which you get this runoff. So they have to either, you know, meet what the existing runoff is or be under that runoff. And, you know, just I brought these numbers down. So the two-year they're existing, well, the two-year, 10-year, I'll go run through the existing for the two years, .4 or 5 inches of runoff, and the proposed is .29. The 10-years existing is 1.91, and the proposed is 0.63. And then the 100-year runoff is 6.06 inches versus what the proposed is, which is 1.35. So they're actually reducing the amount of runoff that's coming from this site.
Okay.
They are also, in that pond, going to be receiving waters from future development. That area on the east side is also a proposed development that is unknown in the future, and that is going to be something that could be up to 70% impervious. So right now, that pond is going to well exceed any current development.
Okay. But as a shared lot and a shared pond, it would still be okay?
Correct.
Okay. And I see it looks like the access and egress is all coming off of Stevens Drive, nothing off of Bridge. Do we know, this is set to be some professional occupancy, correct?
An eye care center.
Okay, okay. Any additional questions on this, Deb, that you had? I know a number of neighbors will likely be asking, so.
Yes, it just happens, one of my neighbors in the neighborhood had question and seen some trucks, and back when this was talked about, I don't know, four or six years ago, I was leading my neighborhood group, so attended those different QuickTrip meetings, and definitely the neighborhood did not want a QuickTrip. And, you know, this is a professional building. But as, I guess, the second QuickTrip request, it seems that they were working with Annabelle that wanted to expand their parking. And I was kind of wondering from the map whether there would be an opportunity for that at all in the future. And I left a message for Heath Tappy, but I guess I was kind of surprised how it all came to be, that I had thought the normal starting step was with engineering and the planning commission. And it just seemed that nobody seemed to know anything about it. And I sent an email to Pat Peckham last night and looked at a couple of months on the planning. And so even though I do think the neighbors are not going to quibble compared to QuickTrip because of a lot of extra traffic and trash and teenagers and beer and cigarettes and all that, within near schools and all the congestion, I do think the neighbors want to be involved in knowing what's going on and give their information about it. And with the Annabelle apartments, I think it was a former convent that was built by the Catholic school. Now, it's extremely affordable housing, more of a room and bathroom and showers down the hall, so really affordable. But they may have an interest in extending their parking lot or maybe wanting to buy part of it of, I don't know, for a garden or whatever. So I guess I wish we had more information or it had come up before SISAM. So I guess at this point, I'm, I guess I'm just not comfortable giving a yes when the neighborhood hasn't had a chance to respond. And you do have quite a bit of that lot to the east available. And it was something QuickTrip had planned on, helping Annabelle, you know, extend their parking. And I would think they're having some of the same issues now. And I guess I'd like more information from the neighborhood. Thank you.
The only part of this that we can manage in SISAM is the stormwater easement part. Do we know this, I would assume the reason this wasn't on plan is because it dovetails with the zoning that's already there? They've not requested a zoning change?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So the only time they have to go through plan is if they need a zoning change? Is that correct? Is that why we're only seeing it here?
Yeah, or conditional use, or the property isn't, you know, as you said, zoned.
Sure.
And so if it meets the zoning and the development, that would be through community development and planning to review those.
Sure.
So I'm assuming that it meets all the zoning criteria and what it is.
Okay. And so if this, as it sits, meets our runoff standards, we really have no reason as a SISAM committee not to finish the stormwater part. Whatever the use for the lot to the east is, has to meet the same requirements, and it has to meet zoning and whatnot. So whatever anybody would want to put there, you certainly would have to meet those requirements or request a change. I mean, now, that's still unknown. But it looks like the only part of what we have to manage here is if we're good with the way this pond lays out. Committee members, any other thoughts? Go ahead, Tom. Motion to approve the stormwater agreement, is there a second? Second by Wadinsky. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote on the stormwater. Wadinsky?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well, and that will pass. Item number two is discussion and possible action on a temporary ordinance allowing parklets within city street parking spaces, including design and construction requirements and standards. And you'll see that you've got some materials in your packet that our staff has been working on for the last month and a half approximately. And so in our efforts to help our economy and our business districts bounce back from the nightmare that was COVID-19, a new idea has emerged for this year called a parklet. And this is something that exists in other cities. And so Tyler Vogt, who owns Townies and Malarkey's, brought this forward to us along with Blake Opel Wajaski from Main Street and Mark Craig, who represents Compass Properties. And so our staff met with them a while back, and we were given some information for how parklets work in other cities. There are some cities like Madison who have them permanent where they never move. What you see in your packets, though, the parklet would be constructed by the private sector business owner. I mean, it would be owned by them, maintained by them, and removed at the end of the season. So we could still reclaim those parking spots if we needed to. It's approximately the size of two standard parking stalls along Third Street, room enough to house four or five dining tables with proper spacing. And they would remove and store the item at the end of the season. So that's kind of where we left off with our private sector partners on considering parklets. But this would be another way for them in our business district to be able to offer people some more outside, open-air dining space still, as we are still grappling with the pandemic and navigating our way through what we hope is the tail end of it. And so our engineers worked with our Assistant City Attorney Tara to come up with the policy you see in your packets. And Mr. Vogt is here also, if you guys have questions for him about the idea. The first one is proposed to be in front of his establishment. We would issue a parklet permit, basically, that would allow him to occupy those two parking spots for the season, and then remove that in the fall. Questions, anyone, on that? Go ahead, Tom.
I would move to approve. I really do support this measure.
Okay.
And if I get a second, I'd explain why.
Okay. Is there a second? We have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Second by Wadinsky? Additional comments? Go ahead, Tom.
Well, I just want to say that, you know, I know this is a street agenda, you know, item. And, you know, looking at it from that standpoint, you know, we have to think about things like available parking and whatnot. And, you know, that age-old discussion about ample parking downtown, we all know there's plenty of parking downtown. What there isn't plenty of is a lot of willingness to walk an extra, you know, 50 feet. So people just, you know, once there's some kind of, even if it's temporary infrastructure there, they'll get used to it. I mean, we've done valet parking on the 300 block, you know, and that's been fine, and it's reaped, you know, rewards in getting more people, the ability to come down and have their cars taken away and whatnot. And that helps alleviate the congestion parking and gives more people a chance to enjoy downtown. This is also something that's not really our purview, but I'll just throw it out there, that this is really a strategic thing with regards to how our city is looking to continue to create a sense of space, a sense of place, attractions that are, you know, a little unusual, and downtown is the place to do that. So I completely support this, and I hope everybody sees that it's a good thing.
I hope so, too. I think when we talked with them, it was a really well-thought-out plan, and given the fact that it's not excessive in size and they won't likely be excessive in number, I think that we can accommodate that and still have ample parking that cycles out on a reasonable timeframe. And in the policy, Tara had crafted it such that a couple of business owners, if they chose to invest in one, could share one. So you wouldn't expect that you'd see three or four of these on one block face because businesses could work together. And what we've been seeing in the River District is they have been working together throughout the pandemic, you know, both to offer outdoor dining and the dining in the street things, and like Thursdays on Third, and some of these events that came together last summer that, you know, really helped them along tremendously during a summer when people couldn't eat inside. And I think them being able to spread people out outside this summer also is just very helpful. I mean, it's certainly appealing, people want to be outside, they want to eat outside. But beyond that even, I think it's just safer if they have more tables out there to offer people outdoor space still. So any additional questions or comments? Deb, go ahead. Okay, and then we'll get Lou. Go ahead, Deb.
Okay. I was just thinking about the block where Tyler is located, as well as where the Mint is, and then being right across the street from the 400 block, that I guess I could see four parking spots being taken up. And I do think for a number of older customers like me that have gone to the Mint, they want to be able to park right outside. And I guess I just am concerned that within that block, that could very much limited the amount of parking that's available, and that you're also right across from the 400 block. So there might be a number of people that would want to do a takeout and then sit in the 400 block and then have their kids be able to play in that, and that we will be having some activities back in place now this summer where we didn't think so a few weeks ago. So I don't know how it would work, but I guess I'm just kind of concerned that it's a very narrow lane for the cars. And then if it could happen, it would be preferable to be up on the sidewalk, so to have it further away from traffic. But I do see that block could be a little crowded.
Right. We actually went out there when we talked about this proposal last month and measured it out to see how this thing would fit. It's level with the sidewalk, but it's not on the sidewalk because of the sidewalk café permits that they all have. But this is kind of an extension of that. The difference between this and the 400-block terrace is that the owner of this would be allowed to amend their premises on a temporary basis, like we've allowed for sidewalk cafés, and they would be able to serve alcohol to people sitting on this. And so they have, though, scaled the size such that it doesn't take the entire parking spot out to the travel lane. There is space for access still to the handicap access ramp if it's necessary, and there's space for people to walk behind this thing without being in the street. So we were concerned about that also, but when we went out there and paced it off, it does seem to fit better than you might think. Lou, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to let you know that I am also in full support of this, but also my question is, is what constitutes a season? I mean, is it May 1st to September 1st? Is there dates set?
I believe the end date was October 31st. Was it April 1st, Tara? May 1st?
It's May 1st to, is it May or, May 1st to October 31st?
So May 1st to 10/31 would constitute a season, so it would have to be gone by the end of October. Tyler, come on up if you'd love comments to make. State your name and address into the microphone for the record.
My name's Tyler Vogt. I live at 145824 in Patience Drive. You guys did it to mirror the sidewalk café seating and the dining in the street permit, so it followed the same, so everything just ends and begins in the same season. I think that was the idea of this. I guess beyond that, I might add that I've been in contact with Wausau Tile because I thought they might have some cool ideas on how to do this. It turns out they've made several of these, and they've sent them to Madison. I've got the guy's number, he's already got a quote. We already have it engineered for all of this stuff, so it'll be a breeze to put down heavy, but able to be picked up. Beyond that, I'm constructing the benches themselves in a way that they could house additional tables and chairs for the rest of my neighbors downtown for the continuation of dining on the street. We used to have that program. We used a rental company to bring it downtown. Now that it's being expanded, I guess, has that been approved? But when it's expanded to twice a week, we're able to save quite a bit of money if we can store these things ourselves somewhere. Right now, the 300 block is able to use a vacant storefront, but, you know, hopefully that gets filled with some kind of business or idea, and then we've got this area that already can house these things. I kind of thought a few ways about this for everybody.
Sure. It's good to see the synergies that go on between our Third Street partners because, you know, then we wouldn't see necessarily applications for five or six of these permits. You'd see businesses work together and, you know, obviously then minimize the impact to parking.
Well, and the other, the last question I would have is, is this kind of a temporary idea, or would this be, you know, for years to come? Because it is a pretty substantial investment.
It's, the original proposal is, the permit would be an annual. So this is our first annual, obviously, this is a test this year. We've never had them before.
Yeah, okay.
But much like valet parking and the taxi stand and a lot of other things that, you know, you were with us on, if they haven't been a problem, we've certainly also looked to make those things permanent when they make sense. So I think that's a discussion I would see us have next year.
Right.
Once we get through this season, or even, you know, later in the fall. We could take stock of how it went.
Sure.
You know, and then decide if there's some tweaks that we wanted to make going forward.
It's very reasonable.
Yeah. Jim?
My only concern would be on possibly some of the roads it could be on, such as state highways like Scott Street. I don't.
They wouldn't be permitted.
It can't be. They have it limited.
But I mean, if we started in one place, other places might want to get on board, and if it's a good thing. So I think we should have some limitations with that for safety reasons.
We do. It's a case-by-case permit, but I think they're banned on county trunk highways and state highways and connecting thoroughfares.
I also was wondering, is there any license fee or monthly income on that since you're taking away public right-of-way for parking?
There's an application fee, and I think it was $40. We charge the same for that that we charged for the sidewalk café.
$40 for the year?
Yes.
For the season.
Or for the season, yes.
It'd be back in the winter. Oh, yeah. Good call.
Yeah. Go ahead, Tara, if you have updates.
I just wanted to go through a couple of things that were in the packet. Right now, this is a temporary thing for this year, like Lisa mentioned, so it would be looked at again if we were to continue this. There's a $40 license permit thing, primarily because engineering has to look at these things and make sure they work and are secure. One of the things, and we don't charge right now at all for the temporary amendment of alcohol premise to allow people, restaurants, to have gone out to the café sidewalk areas, and we don't charge for the temporary sidewalk café. If somebody wants one permanently, that's a different thing. You know, people get an annual permit every year for the sidewalk cafés, have to pay. But this is sort of right now, looking at this as a COVID, sort of a test, trial thing. There were, one of the things is DOT does not allow parklets on state trunk highways or connecting highways. They did have an approval for that last summer because of COVID. I wasn't able to figure out if they have a temporary permission for this this year, but you would have to get that through DOT if it was allowed. The other thing I drafted it is that a parklet would not be permitted on a street that has a speed limit over 25. So there are some safety things in there, and then the design of those things would also, you know, require some kind of vertical accent in order that drivers of vehicles would be able to see them. There's just a couple of things on the second page of the comments that I wanted some direction from this committee. And that, because of the parking issue, especially downtown, I think there is a balancing that needs to be done for how many of these parklets would be allowed versus how much of the parking we want to preserve for local businesses and patrons of those businesses. So currently, the way it was drafted proposes a length and width restriction on size of parklets. They can't be greater than the length of the frontage of the restaurant that is adjacent to the parklet, or 30 feet, whichever is less. And the width is the maximum width of the parking space to be used, or nine feet, whichever is less. An alternative to that is you could do it by parking space. You can't use more than two parallel spaces, parallel parking spaces, or three-angle parking spaces, so I just, if somebody has any idea about that before it would go to council. The other thing is whether or not there should be a limitation on the number of parklets to be permitted per city block. Is it one? Is it two? Is it three? And that's something I think we could also alternatively phrase in terms of, we would allow a number of parklets per block that doesn't reduce the available parking spaces by, say, perhaps more than 20%. That allows a little bit of flexibility, depending on, you know, some blocks only have parking on one side of the street, some have it on both sides of the street. So that's another option. Then I just wanted to, you know, for sake of clarification, whether these might want to go directly to engineering, to Eric, for approval, or if they should be submitted to the clerk, and then they'll sort of disseminate that through. Some communities have required a performance bond to be posted in order to assure that if the restaurant or business owner does not take those down as winter approaches, and we need to get there to do snow, that that performance bond would be to the benefit of the city, and we would recover our costs if we have to go take it down. And then just something for everyone to note is that this draft does allow handicap spaces, parking spaces, to be relocated if that can be done reasonably and conveniently to accommodate the parklets. So those are some things I wouldn't mind some guidance, especially the number, 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 and size.
The, when we were out there pacing that off, that maximum size of 30 by 9 seemed to be well-suited for the size of the block that we were on. Now, we were in the 400 block of Third Street when we paced that out. You know, the idea that, the way you have it written in the draft, to say that it is the lesser of the frontage of the business or 30 by 9, I think makes sense. You certainly wouldn't want a dimension that would exceed the width of the applicant's business premises and then encroach upon their neighbor, you know, who, whether or not that business is another restaurant, to think the way it's written in the draft certainly makes sense. I do agree with delegating the approval on these, because we've got defined criteria they need to meet, delegating the approval to the professional staff so they don't need to wait to get going on their plan for a meeting like this or a meeting of the council. Because what we found with a lot of our COVID provisions is they could have waited five weeks to get started, waiting for us to have meetings. So delegating that to the people who are going to vet the plan anyway certainly makes sense, and we've done that with all of the alcohol provisions as well. They're not waiting on public health and safety. If they meet the criteria, we've allowed the clerk to approve them. I think it makes sense to allow engineering to approve these. What do you guys think? Tom?
No, I would just add that process to my motion.
Right. And as far as the capacity within a block face, obviously, some blocks are busier than others, some contain more businesses that would be interested than others. But the ability that they can share one, I think will keep them to a minimum. I don't know that, you know, I think that we need to make the process easy to understand. So, you know, if we wanted to set a limit on how many parklets you could have on a block face, you know, rather than try to measure what 25% of the total parking is on a given day, is it easier for us to just say, we're not going to position more than two of these on one block face? Because we do need to preserve parking for the other businesses that are not interested in using them. So what are your thoughts on that? I think just make it simple, two, you know, rather than try to haggle percentages.
I agree, Lisa. I guess I'm just, I feel like up to two different businesses needs to be the limit, and that I think we want to make sure, Tara, that we do have some handicapped accessible as part of those section of a block, at least one.
Well, what I said is it would be able to be relocated, meaning in the same block.
Right.
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 Yeah, this isn't going to change the number of spaces of handicapped accessible, just allow the relocation of them.
That's great.
If it can be conveniently relocated for the individuals who use them.
Right. Okay. That sounds good. Thank you.
One thing I want to make really clear, in case it escaped anyone's notice, this is just for full-service restaurants. It's not going to be for bars.
Right.
Or local businesses or fast-food type of restaurants. Those people can maybe. Those people can maybe partner with with Tyler or partner with somebody to use that space. But this process is not available to, you know, some some quick fast food place. I just want that in case, you know, you hear anything about it.
The other thing I think with regard to some cities requiring performance bonds, I think that's a little much for our scale here. I think that we can get to the same place by stipulating in the permit application that if we have to tend to it or move it, that we do that at the owner's expense and that we just charge them back. You know, I don't think that we need to have somebody go out and pursue a bond which represents another cost for this temporary measure to them when we can stipulate in the language of the permit that if we have to, if they're not holding up their end of the bargain and we have to move it, that we would do that at their expense and we would charge that that back, you know, whatever that cost might be. But I think that all of the, and the other thing we talked about was, you know, where we would allow this to happen. And we did agree that we want businesses to all have fair access to something like this. And if there are businesses on other, in other areas other than just River District, if there's businesses, you know, outside that River District area, if there's some on the West Side that would like to consider something similar, this process is available to them as well, as long as they meet the criteria. So it's not just a downtown thing. We'd be willing to offer it to anybody in town that has a need for one, as long as they meet the criteria. So.
Question?
Go ahead, Jim.
I guess I'm a little concerned about allowing a business or giving a business two hundred seventy more square feet of business space on a public area without a fee for that, you know, more than forty dollars. I mean, the first year, I think, I'm going to support this and I think forty dollars the first year is great. But maybe we should revisit this next year if it becomes popular and the business is doing well. Is there a way we can maybe get a little more fee for giving that space up?
This expires automatically by its terms on October thirty-first. So anything that comes for the future is up for grabs. So, yes.
Well, and I think what I'd like to do is take a look at this and take stock of what happened this season and how it went. As soon as the season is over, and of course, you know, event season and things and the outdoor season is definitely not happening in the winter. So I would expect that by our December meeting, we would take a look at how this went and decide. And we know economically, in a normal economy, absent a pandemic, we know what the revenue value of a parking space is. And I think then, you know, if we wanted to look at going forward, some level of permanence with this, where we would be basically renting those spots for a span of like six months or whatever. I think we could, we can create a price tag for that. But I think first for us to find out whether it works and whether they still want it after is is certainly a future discussion. Tom?
Yeah, I just, you know, going forward though, I want to, you know, reassure people that want to, you know, take advantage of this this idea that, you know, we're not going to rake them over the coals, you know, at the end of the year and and make them jump through hoops and all that sort of thing. Because again, what we're looking at here is not just, you know, offering, you know, public parking spaces to a local business. We are actually investing to our, into our recreational infrastructure, if you will, our brand as a city. I think it's important that we keep thinking along those lines from a strategic point of view. It's really important for our city to keep coming up with ways to, you know, have novel and interesting ways for people to enjoy themselves here.
True. If we put our economic development hats on, I certainly agree with the idea that creating a sense of place and drawing people into the area has a separate economic impact. And so that's certainly a discussion we can have as we go forward as far as, you know, value braces, value, value compared to loss and see where we would be with that. Any additional comments or questions? Okay, with a motion and a second on the floor then to approve the parklet proposal, with the clarifications that we came up with here tonight, two on a block face, delegating the approval to staff when they meet the criteria, and then making sure that the permit language includes the stipulation that if we have to remove it, that we would remove it at the owner's expense or expect to charge that service back to the owner. Not requiring a performance bond is kind of where we came onto this discussion. Is that all incorporated into your motion and second?
Yes.
Okay. So then with that, do we have additional comments or questions? If not, we'll go ahead and vote on that by roll call vote. Ryan?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well and that passes unanimously. All right. Thank you, everyone, for your work on this. This was kind of an innovative concept and we kind of had to rally a little bit to get done in time so that it could come out in the spring if people want them. And it might be just a nice addition for us as summer comes on and with early spring in progress, it's kind of a good time for that. Item number three is discussion and possible action on installation of a third driveway at five seventeen to five twenty-one Fulton Street. Alan has this item for us.
So there's a developer bought a couple of homes and cleared them and looking at putting up a, I believe it's a six unit apartment building here. And the site, is it nine? Nine, okay. And Bill Hebert brought this to my attention that they are requesting three driveways on Fulton Street. And as I noted in the staff report, section twelve twenty dot forty of the municipal code requires that if a single residence is requesting three driveways, that it has to be approved by a council. So this is the first step here to get it. I do not have an issue with it. They have, you know, they have adequate spacing between the drives. Two of the drives, from my understanding, are going to be used for garages. And the third driveway on Fulton Street is to access the parking, the parking lot on the.
Parking on the side there.
Yes. So it's a twenty-five mile an hour street, slow speed and so I don't, I don't see a problem with it.
Okay. It makes sense. Do we have a motion? Oh, go ahead.
I've moved to approve, but I have a question, Alan.
Let's take the motion first. We have a motion from Tom to approve. Is there a second? Second by Wadinsky. Go ahead with your question and then we'll get Lou also.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I, at first blush, I'm in favor of this. But my question revolves around business next door because I think they would be losing at least two parking spaces out front by, you know, adding this this driveway. And there's precious few there. I mean, they only have, you know, they're one door down from the corner. So, I mean, have they been approached about this and have they any concerns?
Actually, this this additional parking on the side, the owner of this property is the owner of the restaurant building as well. And and the goal of this was specifically because we're losing some street parking so that the restaurant would have additional.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
I love when places work together. Okay, additional comments? Lou, did you have anything or was that a second?
That was a second.
Okay, all right. So no additional comments? We'll go ahead and vote on this then with a motion and a second on the floor. Wadinsky?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well and that item then is also approved. Item number four is discussion and possible action on proposed twenty twenty-two street construction projects. And you see, we've got a few listed there. If you want to walk us through those, Alan?
So when we went, when we approved this year's projects, it was a five-year plan was established, you know, that was shifted around a little bit. So these were the streets that were, and I didn't include the five-year plan, but I can, I can hand out if you guys want it. So these were the three streets that were proposed for two thousand and twenty-two construction. So I'm just bringing them here to move them ahead. What that does is it starts our notification process with the residents and with utilities. So we'd send out letters, you know, shortly to say that, hey, this is proposed two thousand and twenty-two. It gets people, puts them on notice and then, you know, we could continue forward, put them in the budget and then work from there. So this is the first step to get these three streets for two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay. Comments, committee members?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Wadinsky. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by, second by Neil. I see Fourth Avenue from Bridge to Knox, that street, is that the Fourth Avenue that's been on as long as you've worked here? It's bad. So I'm glad that you picked that one and it's finally moving its way up the ladder. And then, you know, Bugbee, obviously, that's going to be out in front of the new water plant. And, you know, we had deferred that originally when we shuffled the list for this year. I did hear from one resident along there that was concerned about other streets being, needing to be done first because theirs has such low traffic. And so it sounded like if we had stuff that was either higher priority or worse, that they were willing to wait, even though it's not in top condition. So I think that's something that, you know, as we go forward with the twenty twenty-two budget process, we should keep in mind because we may hear that from those residents again as we go through public hearings and whatnot. But, you know, if there were things that needed to be done more, Bugbee seemed to be, at least those residents seemed to be willing to wait. But we certainly could start the process and see where we end with them. Go ahead, Deb.
I was just going to mention too, that we haven't still made a decision about the surplus funds from twenty twenty. And then I guess from President Biden, I would think a lot of those funds would be relative to road infrastructure as well. So it would be nice to know what is, what is your ranking after this so that when we do decide to recommend how to spend the surplus, if it's four to seven hundred thousand, what kind of streets could we add on to maybe being done in in twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, and I guess that's a discussion we can have. This, I guess this was intended to just get these streets for the general budget for next year. We do have, you know, some other streets we could look at that have been delayed or, you know, that we could move ahead. So and I, and I just want to note too, that the, this five-year plan, obviously, so now that we, this year we'll be doing the two thousand and twenty-one project. So next month, my plan was to bring the, we'll have to update the five-year plan to add the two thousand and twenty-six streets to it. So.
Right.
I didn't want to load that all in one agenda, so next month you can anticipate looking at what we want to add for two thousand and twenty-six.
Well, and I think it's good in our five-year plan that we plan those streets in such a quantity that we are assuming no additional aid. We know that we're looking for or hoping to get increased transportation aid from the state. We're hoping that this, the brawl that's currently playing out in Washington about a giant infrastructure plan, if that makes the cut and gets through, obviously municipalities and counties and states are going to see an influx of aid from that. I think it's good that we have, at least in the back of our minds, a list of, you know, what is bad enough that if we did get that large influx of infrastructure aid, that we would know pretty quickly what streets they would be because we have pavement rankings on everything and that map is pretty rough. I mean, we know that there's a lot of streets to pick from, but I think we should have at least in the back of our mind a list of what we would set in motion depending on what that aid picture looks like. But we should still plan as though we're not getting it and paying it all ourselves. And then if things get way better than we expected, we would go then to this secondary list and start to elevate those projects.
Right. And I think that if, I don't know how quickly this money is going to become, but if it does, you know, we're getting projects shovel ready so that we could actually bid some more projects this year yet.
Good.
You know, these two thousand, these streets that you're, that we're looking to approve with the two thousand and twenty-two, actually, we were out working on them already, getting them towed, so we could have them shovel ready for this year if the money's available.
Yeah.
Also, if you recall, Eau Claire Boulevard was delayed from last year and it was delayed from this year. So we have that, the preliminary work done on that. We're putting those plans together now so that if a larger chunk of money, because if you, the Eau Claire Boulevard project, you know, is almost one and a half million dollars, so.
Wasn't it that though, and then two side streets there as well?
Correct.
In that neighborhood? So that whole neighborhood is something we could knock out then that we've been waiting on.
So we're working to get more projects shovel ready, just in case we do have, you know, we're lucky to get some extra funding.
We would, we would love that. So Mayor, comment?
Sure. Yeah, I just want to put out a couple of things. You know, the governor's budget is looking at a two percent increase in transportation, so it's not a ton and it probably doesn't even cover the cost of inflation for supplies that we're seeing right now. But just putting that out there and we don't know what the the actual legislature is going to do. And we actually have been hearing that, you know, if we do get a big infrastructure push from the federal government, it could affect what the state legislature is willing to give out to local governments. So just, you know, being optimistic and and ready, but also not too attached.
Right, right. Because they can certainly give it and take it away. So, yeah, I think it's good for us to have a plan, but then be cautious in what we commit to until we know that we're getting more than we planned. Committee members, any, any comments on that plan? Okay, if not, we've got a motion and a second then to move these streets forward in the process and we'll go ahead and vote on that. Neil?
Aye.
Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well and that item is approved. Item five is discussion and possible action on amendment number one to the contract with Capron Associates regarding the Business Campus Bicycle Pedestrian Trail Project. And TJ has that one?
As we recall, back in November, we brought to you an update of where we stand with the Seventy Second Avenue Business Campus Trail and that we were experiencing some additional costs due to some increased scope and then also diving deeper into the plans. While this is part of that, at that November meeting, we discussed that there was about three hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase to that project that included construction and design. So this contract increase would be just north of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to complete the plats and the assessments for those properties.
Right. And it seemed at the time, our sentiment in the committee was that we were not interested in having a patchy approach and a disconnected approach to how that stuff out there flows. So under the circumstance, with the recommendation being that we approve contract amendment number one, what are your thoughts, committee? You have a motion to approve? Motion by Neil, is there a second? Second by Larson. Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Larson?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Wadinsky?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
I'll vote aye as well and that item is approved. Item number six is an update on the twenty twenty MS four annual report and illicit discharge detection and elimination program guidance.
All right. So this item actually has two items, the annual report and then also the illicit discharge program guidance that we created for the MS four. The MS four annual report, we bring to SISM every year just to give an update on what's been happening stormwater wise within the city. This annual report discusses the annual expenditures, inspections that were completed, water quality improvements that took place within the city, and then an evaluation of the overall program guidance such as public outreach and education and other things that the DNR requires as part of our permit. Just to highlight a couple of items within this annual report. Although it was a challenging year, we did have a lot of construction happening inside the city of Wausau. We completed fifty-three inspections of private business development. And then we also went and completed inspection of all the stormwater ponds within the city to make sure that maintenance is being taken care of and that they're processing stormwater the way they should be. Also, which was new as part of this annual report, is that the DNR was requiring several new documents to be submitted, sort of keeping all the MS four permities in line and making sure that we're keeping up with the requirements. You can find this on, I think, the last page of all the compliance documents that were submitted with the annual report, one of which was this IDE program guidance that I wanted to talk to you about. So before I move on to that, are there any questions on the actual annual report?
I have none. Committee members, do you have any? If not, we'll place the report on file and then go ahead with the other document.
So as part of the annual report, each permit was required to submit a new or updated illicit discharge program. And so since the city didn't have one currently on file, this is a new document which sort of goes through from start to finish. Once a illicit discharge is reported to the city, what steps we need to take to track that down and eliminate that discharge that's entering our stormwater system and eventually hitting the Wisconsin River. So it goes through different inspections that we have to do. Each outfall or major outfall that the city has going into the Wisconsin River has to be inspected each permit cycle, which is every five years. And at that time, we inspect any outfall that is flowing. Sometimes that's just from groundwater infiltration. But we do take samples and test it for any parameters that may indicate some type. But we do take samples and test it for any parameters that may indicate some type of contaminant. We also go through and discuss who the proper staffing is to complete those inspections and do the field analysis. There is a flow chart that is in the appendix that lists the steps from getting that call to, you know, whether you have to report it to DNR right away, or if it could just be handled in-house. We have had a couple illicit discharge reportings over the past couple of years since I've been here, and it's kind of been unknown what is supposed to happen. Some of them come from the PD, some of them go to inspections, some of them come right to engineering. But now hopefully, now that we have this document, we can give the training to the proper people so that we know where to go and how to eliminate the discharges that do occur. So everything from reporting to cleanup to elimination, and then record keeping. But that's about it. We will do annual staff training on this document so that the proper people are aware of how to report and.
Sure.
Document this.
This is a positive step, to have it laid out in steps, have people know where to go and what to do when it happens, and, you know, just a lot less margin for error than I think if we've got it formalized. So I'm glad we have this document. Committee members, any comments? Go ahead, Eric, you have a comment?
Nice job, TJ. Thanks. Great job.
Yep, good. Appreciate this. The last item on our agenda, if no one else has any comments, we'll pass this, or place this report on file. The last item on our agenda is future agenda items. Does anyone have anything they know they want to see right now? Jim?
Yeah, I would be interested in knowing if our stormwater, the way we handle stormwater funding is the proper way or the best way to do it for the taxpayer. I'd like some options. I know this has been talked about in the past, but I'd like to get some information, maybe in the next few months or in several meetings out, if we could get some information, what would be best for the taxpayer if we continue how we are or a new way.
Yep.
That's all for now. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I think we'll get that on our, on our agenda coming up. It's time for us to revive that discussion about a stormwater utility and what its economic benefits are. A few years ago, we had gone to referendum on that, but I think that our efforts to inform the public as far as what the difference was between paying it the way we do today in a different way really was not circulated as widely as it should have been to get people to really understand it. So, yes, I'd be apt to have a presentation in this committee about the value of a stormwater utility and a comparison in cost between the two. In parallel with that, our finance committee in an upcoming meeting here, I'm not sure if it's, I don't think it's our next meeting, but coming up towards the end of April, is going to take a look at the impact that the direct legislation requiring referendum for any new service fees has had on our budget and has really, we've been hamstrung by that for a really long time. And, you know, we could be saving a whole lot of mil rate if we would look at how we handle that legislation and how we handle things like stormwater and refuse. So finance, we'll be having those discussions probably within the next month. Mary Ann's working on some, the economics of that. And this really dovetails with that. So if this committee takes up that discussion in the next couple of months, if we can get those, get some visuals on that that people can see, you know, even people that watch our meeting need to be able to understand it, get some graphics created, we'll try and do that either at our mayor June meeting would be of value. Anything else anybody wants to see? Deb?
Thank you. I had talked to a resident that was, that was interested in what was happening with the Eye Care Project, and also mentioned about the Bridge Street on the north side of taking down the no-turn on red. And that his concern is that there's a lot more traffic from the north trying to make left-hand turns onto Bridge Street. And I think it would be helpful to revisit, maybe look at an option of making the sign bigger for a number of us that used to be nearsighted or may have had cataracts and can't read little signs. But it just seems with this development coming, it may be helpful to revisit it at this point.
Sure. That might be something to study, I think, just to see what kind of traffic that generates, and maybe if we get a chance to do that. Once it's there, I think it's easier to tell what kind of traffic it's going to have and when. You know, because we kind of know what happens with school getting out and schools starting in that area, but we don't know really what the impact of this will be yet, but I think that's something we certainly should keep an eye on. I agree.
The other point I, I guess I wanted to mention, one of my neighbor, younger neighbors is planning to do a walk around the block for the vacation of the alley between Eighth and Ninth for Allen's property, where the, the rock wall in his alley has fallen, and he's gotten quotes up to $50,000 to replace it. And of course, he can't afford anything like that. The alley on the north side, or I guess on the south side, excuse me, is 80% not used just by one house on the north side, the second house in that has the garage there. So I would anticipate that's going to be coming forward, hopefully next month.
Yep, and yeah, and that's a discussion that we definitely can have, you know, between staff and the property owner, and if we find that we need to act on a vacation, or we get a petition for one, we certainly can do that here.
And then, I know we do have on the budget as part of what's going to be happening with that flashing crossing walk right near the library, but I do think a number of residents in my area with Marathon Park would like to see, is that a possibility? And I know that road is, you know, part of the state domain of administration per se, but I guess I think of flashing walking with animals and with strollers and that, if we can cut it off early on before they pick up speed, that might be a better solution and help for people that like to visit Marathon Park year-round, and then it could help also with when we do have the fair.
So at 12th and Stewart, were you talking about something like a rapid flashing beacon like we have, or have approved for by the library, and we've got one over on Fifth Street also? Or are you looking at Pet Heads, where they're like walk and don't walk type signs? What were you thinking of?
I guess I'm not sure at this point. I'd like to get back to my neighbors, but I, I did have one concerned gentleman that was ready to start a petition, that he was trying to walk his, his young baby in a stroller and his dog, and it just seems like he felt he was taking his life in his hands trying to cross.
Both are rather expensive, but Pet Heads, normally, we can't put in unless we have stoplights. Is that correct? So we'd have to, I mean, there's not a stop, stoplight there, but rapid flashing beacons, we've used around the courthouse and that to try to get people to be more aware of people crossing, you know, where you just have the rapid flashing sign, and, you know, that, that's something that we approved for by the library, right, with Washington? As opposed to a crossing lights?
Yeah, there's overheads there already with the flashing. So I think I would have to look at if we can put those RRF Bezos Rapid Response, if we can put those up on those overheads, I'm not sure. That's something I'd have to look into.
Okay. Yeah, if you can take a look at it and see, I mean, I, I, that's, well, the school year's coming to an end, so I mean, maybe that's something we can look at over the next couple of months and see if you recommend any change there. Obviously, that's an engage the DOT type process as well, right? So.
Right. I wanted to mention, like I said earlier, the five-year plan, we'll plan to bring that back next month. So I think I can have Lori do is email you the existing five-year plan.
Yeah.
Which has all the other streets that are ranked low, so we can, it's a four-year plan now. And, but it has all the other streets that are low enough, so then hopefully we can, I mean, I'll make some suggestions, working with Eric, but.
Yeah.
I know if you guys have other suggestions, you can look at all the other streets that are listed.
We have so many that are bad. My hope would be that they would be in either high-traffic or high-vis areas, and, because we know that we have a lot of residential streets that maybe flow 30 cars a day that are bad, but they're not as bad as the stuff people travel every day. You know, and that's where, that was my point kind of with Bugbee. Bugbee's not in great shape, but it doesn't flow near the traffic that some of these other bad ones do. And I think if we need to shift our priority to the things that people either see or use the most, that's what I guess I'd like to see us analyze when we try to pick streets, make the biggest impact first, is kind of how it feels. Additional items that anyone would like to see? If not, if anything comes up in the meantime between meetings, you guys know where to find me, just email me or call me. But we'll work on a presentation about stormwater utility, and we'll work on, you know, what options there might be for 12th and Stewart that aren't already there. And then going forward, we'll see that plan too then. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn because we are out of agenda items. Motion by Wadenski, second by Larson. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody ever is. All right, we'll stand adjourned. Thanks, everyone.